Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Ward?
Here.
Mrs. Maroni?
Here.
Mrs. Peng?
Here.
Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
All present by Mr. Erichow and Mrs. Patel.
Opening statement. The New Jersey Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted about. In accordance with the previous provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted in the Board of Education and administrative offices. Copies of the notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2019, and April 22nd, 2019. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. So move on. We're gonna have a budget presentation, then we're gonna have a public comments. So, Mr. Saxton is not feeling well, so Deborah is gonna present today.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. This budget reflects the work of all of the district, the administrators, the teachers, the principals, the supervisors, and the finance committee who met for many hours to try to get this to where we need to be to be responsible, to take care of the district, and be as responsible to the taxpayers as is our charge. So our 1920 proposed budget reflects our priorities of our district and balances the financial challenges that we face and stays below the 2% revenue cap here in the district despite our increased enrollment. So the budget is $262,098,396. That results in an annual tax increase for the average home of $113 annually and a rate of only 1%. The revenue in Edison Township relies heavily on the taxpayers, on the local tax levy, with 86% of the funding for our schools coming directly from our residents. Our enrollment, as you know, we've talked about this over and over again, in the last 10 years, our enrollment has grown, 2,375 students. That is the size of JP Stevens. That is the entire high school. We have grown, and we have fit them into our 17 schools. That results in an increase of 16.75%. This budget, if you look at the comparisons, and I'll highlight it in, it's easier to see on the next slide, you will notice that as with any budget, including your personal budget, our expenses increase all the time and we have to take care of our bills, but you will notice that there are some increases that percentage-wise are a little bit higher than we would've liked, but also please notice that our benefit line is down for the first time or second time in years. So a couple things to note. Our budget reflects the increased costs in special education, tuition, related services, and transportation, as is our responsibility. We have an additional 20 teaching staff members and 13 additional staff members to meet the needs of our growing enrollment. Those staff members, those 33 staff members are everywhere, from grounds to a secretary to a nurse to teachers at the elementary school, middle school, and an additional supervisor. Meets our health benefit contractual obligations, which are reduced by, the employees contribute $8 million to our health benefit contributions, our health benefit bills. In technology, we're continuing our one-to-one initiative, which was started a while ago. This budget reflects the second year of our three-year lease purchase agreement. It continues our commitment to technology improvements, which we continue to have to do, just bandwidth and instructional software, and it provides a technology secretary to coordinate and implement operational needs of the technology department, which will be a big help to our community, because we'll have one person dedicated just to answering the phones and fixing the passwords. In security, another big place where we've made a commitment, our security is not only visible, what you see in our security guides, but behind the scenes, we have a wide area of video network, which we continue to improve and expand. We have our director of school safety in place, and we have another, this also provides for our SLEOs, which contract was approved last month. These are all of our, despite all of the improvements that we're making, you could see that our security services, because of the negotiation, the total package is really not much higher than it was last year, just another $60,000. In student activities, we're very committed to the whole student here, so we maintain our commitment to student activities, which is a relatively small piece of the budget, but a very important piece of the budget. We're continuing to improve our strength and conditioning wellness programs in our weight rooms and our high schools. We have continued practice of replacement of the music instruments, which that way we can have as many students participate as possible. We have continued to support intramural and interscholastic athletic competitions, and we already have the plans in place to continue to expand the unified program for our special education students, and we have the introduction of cricket in the curriculum and at the middle school and high school levels. Our curriculum provides for the expansion of the STEM program at grades 9-12. The grade nine cohort has more students than previous years. We continue to provide our ESL and bilingual programs district-wide, so we can meet the needs of every one of our students who need those services. And we continue to align district curriculum. We make a commitment to review and enhance our curriculum, make sure it's aligned with the student learning standards annually. We've asked for a supervisor, and this budget provides for a supervisor of 21st century skills, so a supervisor can provide leadership for the computer science, family consumer science, technology, and business curriculum, and we could develop some consistency across the six schools and begin to create a sequence of programs that will make us eligible for Perkins Grants and CTE programs. We have additional teachers, as we said before. We have new textbooks for middle school mathematics, high school biology, and AP physics. We have instructional coaches at the elementary schools, interventionists at the elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. Continue to provide for the staff development trainers, which is a very successful professional development program, and there is money in the budget for professional development sessions and tuition reimbursement as by contract. In operations, we're continuing to improve the use of our Genesis program to expand to personnel and finance this year, and it will also give parents 24-hour access. We've been doing all kinds of things to improve that, implementation of the payroll and personnel system, and maintains our emergency response and blackboard communication system. We have the replacement of roofs at four schools, that's budgeted for. We have electrical upgrades and HVAC upgrades at multiple schools, and in particular, we have improvements to Woodrow Wilson Middle School, which include bleachers, cafeteria floor, and 10 modular classrooms due to the severe overcrowding at this time. Our current expenses look like this. Of course, the most important work we do is teaching, and so of course, our teacher salaries and the benefits, our instruction, our improvement of instruction, our curriculum is the most of the budget. The other parts of that budget support includes all of our related services, including improvement of instruction, and then you can see maintenance and operations. We have a healthy portion there, because we need it to keep our buildings safe. So the educational plan and our budget priorities, we are asked by the state what are our priorities. These are our priorities, to keep our class sizes manageable, so we have to continue to increase staff, continue to improve curriculum to stay aligned and update our textbooks. We are committed to a one-to-one initiative in technology, and we've been really strategic about what we're purchasing and where we're doing it. We're committed to staff development, because we know the work of our teachers is the most important work that we're doing here. High-quality assessment strategies to build the lifelong learners and prepare them for college and careers. We are committed to an exceptional music and fine arts program, which continues to take some investment. We have a co-curricular and club activities that allow students at every grade level to participate in the after-school, so that we continue to build that whole child. We have an interscholastic sports program, and we're working hard at keeping our after-school busing going. So our budget right now, you can see that what the increase is, our percent increase, which is only a 1% increase to the tax levy. Our major budget increases, our negotiated salary increases as per contract, which we are committed to, and transportation, which is a problem, I will say a problem statewide due to a lack of drivers. I might be able to answer the questions, and Mr. Michaud assures me that he will answer any of those questions that I cannot.
Okay.
Will you just go to comments, Mr. Shi?
Yeah, comments, yeah, on the budget only. So whoever wants to go. Andrew Heibel, Howard Avenue, Edison. On page 11 and page 12, back in, I want to say, September, October, November, the board decided they were going to hire eight vice principals, and they were going to abolish two supervisor jobs, but lo and behold, in this budget, the special ed still has five, which it had five last year. And on page 12, supervisors is still 19, plus you're adding another one, so you didn't delete two, you actually have three incoming supervisors for next year. I know supervisors work real hard, but if they have to do an extra evaluation, we don't need another supervisor. You said you were gonna eliminate two supervisors, they're still in the budget. And how do we know they're still in the budget? Because an anticipated job came out for a special ed supervisor on top of it, and that's how it got, everybody in the district knew you never did away with the supervisor, because a job came out, you're still having a special ed supervisor. So instead of doing away with two, we're gonna have three additional supervisors next year. It's unacceptable. You told the public you were gonna abolish two of them, and you didn't. You left them in the budget. On page 15, under legal services, you added $50,000 to legal services. Again, I said it before, and I'll say it again, if the lawyer can't do his job for what was budgeted, get a new lawyer. Page 16, I know we're gonna be having a bond referendum coming up, and you got three elections in the budget. Obviously, you don't plan on any of the elections passing, that's why you have three, you're budgeting for three. And finally, on page 18, under, on the top, on the other purchased professional services, in the last 10 budgets, there was a health insurance consultant line for $60,000. I see that's not in there anymore. How are we paying Alamo? No, you're not gonna answer anything else, but can you tell me at least how we're gonna pay the consultant? It's not in the budget. Is it somewhere else in the budget that I can't find?
Are you done with all your questions?
That's it. I know you're not gonna answer anything else, but can you at least tell me about the consultant fee? I'm done, go ahead.
It's paid by the part of the insurance.
We don't pay it at all?
It's part of the insurance premium.
Okay.
And the, as far as those positions, do you remember what we did exactly with that? I thought we did eliminate some supervisor positions.
No, we didn't eliminate them. What we were gonna do, we had, one was vacant pretty much all year long.
I thought we had three in special education, right?
We had five in the budget. One was vacant pretty much all year, and one, which was a supervisor, became an assistant principal.
Right.
But then Mr. Conklin said he needs that back, so we put him back in there. We didn't say we're gonna eliminate, we were gonna change it to assistant principal. But my understanding was that we were gonna still budget for the same five people we've had and fill those positions. Now, the extra one is the one that Mrs. Gulick talked about, which is 21st century supervisor.
Mr. Michaud, there's still another general supervisor in there. There was 19 last year, and there's 19 this year, plus two lines under it, it says add an additional supervisor.
Correct.
So we didn't take away one of the gen ed supervisors, and we didn't take away a specialized supervisor.
No, we're adding a 21st century supervisor for the related arts.
Correct.
Right.
But in September, October, the board sat here, and the whole presentation, we're having eight assistant principals, and we're eliminating two supervisors. The supervisors were not eliminated, they're still in this budget.
They are in the budget.
Correct.
I don't remember them saying they're gonna eliminate them. I know they were going to make one of these supervisors a vice principal, and that was for the FDR and the ELC.
It was in the agenda, it said, it said eight vice principals, four for, one for each middle school, two for elementary, and we're eliminating two supervisors. Said it right in the agenda. I'm not putting Margaret on the spot, but she's here, I don't, she was sitting up at the chair at the time. You said you were eliminating two supervisor jobs and creating eight vice principals, and you were getting two of the, it was six new positions, and two of the old positions were gonna be supervisors to vice principals. There's technically three new supervisor jobs in this budget, one new one and two existing that you didn't eliminate.
The two that were going to be made assistant principals, what we said was the salary for those supervisors, we're gonna take the place of the assistant principal, and we were gonna be able to use that money, so the budget didn't go up that much, because we're trading off positions. But when I was putting this budget together, I was told that we need five supervisors special ed, and that's what I budgeted for.
So then we're technically adding another, we're adding another special ed supervisor, and we're adding two gen ed supervisors, not one, because numbers are still the same from last year's budget. You still have eight additional vice principal, or six additional vice principals in here, so that didn't change.
Right.
So I'm not holding you on, you're just doing what, you know, was recommended to you, but you're not adding one supervisor, you're adding three supervisors, because you never eliminated the jobs. Thank you. Anybody else? Just to reiterate on the insurance line, you saw the whole cost came down, all right? And Deborah said this is the first time in a lot of years. That tells you something. All right?
Can I just make a couple of comments?
Yes, go ahead.
About the budget, preparation of the budget, I just wanna make sure everybody realizes how much work goes into this thing. We started this in October, we get all the input from the schools, and we try to put this thing together. We've met with the Finance and Facilities Committee probably half a dozen times about this budget, and almost every single time when we left that meeting, I was told to make some cuts. As late as last week.
Last Friday.
We cut another $360,000 into the budget to get it down to where it is right now. So I don't, I'd want everybody to know that we're not just throwing numbers out there, we go over these numbers with a fine-tooth comb, and the board at vacation knows what's in this budget, and everything that was in this budget is now, has been approved by the board. And I just wanna make sure that everybody realizes that we're not just throwing numbers in there for the heck of it, this is what we need to run this operation. We're anticipating another 300 students next year.
You know, you might wanna notice that all those cuts are not impacting our education. They're coming from the vendors, all right? We're reducing the vendors' costs, that's what we should've done, all right? You know, think about, you know, your insurance, you're gonna see why we actually approve it. How much we have been overpaying, the township, the taxpayers, even the members have been overpaying your premium for the past 10, 15 years. We're finally reducing it down. You will see the premium, you know, when we actually approve the budget, all right? So we try to be as responsive as possible, we try not to impact our education, reduce the budget, you know, from the other areas, but not impact our kids' day-to-day classes and not impacting our classrooms. We're doing more, we're putting more money into the facility maintenance. There are other things you're gonna see, and another thing is a roof, roof, because beyond the agenda. Why are we rejecting the roof? We're gonna talk to you later, okay? So that's what the budget is. So any other comments on the budget? Yes, go ahead.
Madam Abdnak, ETA Vice President, just one question. On the last slide, Mrs. Gulick presented, there was a $4.2 million increase in teacher salaries. Does that include the new staffing of teachers, for example, that are listed?
Yeah, if you go to...
30 or something.
Okay, because I just wanna make that clear. It may seem like that's just increasing salaries, but it does include the additional staff in that number.
30 or something, yes.
Thank you.
Just to catch up, we have, even with the 30-member increase, the budget, the budget line for the insurance came down. Notice that. Okay? So any other comments on the budget? See none? Dead?
Okay, then I need a motion to approve the...
Yeah, can I have a motion for the approval of the budget? Yes, Dr. Chen, Mrs. Ward.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Now, we're going back to the previous session, so dead.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter 231, Public Goals of 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances present exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education and Township of Edison as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: health insurance renewal, we're also gonna talk about the roofing bid, contractual, and the personnel, we're gonna be talking about resignations, determinations, retirements, reappointments, and withholding of increments. Three, it is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as these non-disclosure no longer exists, and four, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
All right, can I have a motion? Okay. Mrs. Maroni?
Mrs. Peng. Maroni, Peng.
Okay. Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Probably half an hour. We try to, you know, we try to be quick, but I'll let you guys know. Okay, so, sorry again, can I have a motion to reconvene? Okay, Mrs. Maroni, second. Okay, Mrs. Ward.
Okay, just to reconvene. Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Brecher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Go carry it.
All right, so you guys have the next three resolutions. One is the personnel, the other is health insurance, and the third is the roof bid. Any comments on those three resolutions? Oh, the roof, didn't do it? Oh, the part of the, oh, okay, okay. Any comments on any of these three items? See none? Let's move on. So can I have a motion to vote on these three items, the personnel agenda, the personnel report, the approval of the health insurance carrier, and the bid for the roof replacement and related work? Can I have a motion on that? Okay, Dr. Chen, second. Mrs. Maroni?
Chair, one correction on here, on page three. Inadvertently, Mrs. Gulick's name got on here as reappointment, however, she's clearly leaving.
Oh, okay.
So on page three?
On page three, Deborah Gulick is, got it down by mistake, so we all know she's leaving the district, so we're gonna remove that. Yeah?
I was trying to keep her.
Yeah, we tried to keep her, but she decided that, you know, she wanted to move on, so. All right, so keep that in mind. All right, so, okay.
Okay, so this is a vote for the three items?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
For the personnel, no for Jennifer Martins and Beninda Mahabir, and yes to everybody else. And also yes to the health insurance and the roof replacement.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Conway?
On the personnel, no to Jennifer Martins, yes to everyone else, and yes to the health and to the roof.
Mr. Brecher?
On the personnel, no, no to Jennifer Martins, yes to everyone else, and yes to the roof and everything else.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Peng?
Personnel, no for Jennifer Martins and yes for everybody else, and yes to health insurance and the roof.
Thank you. Mrs. Maroni?
Under personnel, no to Jennifer Martins, yes to everybody else, yes on the health insurance carrier, yes on the roofs.
Thank you. Mrs. Ward?
On the personnel, no on Beninda Mahabir, no on Jennifer Martin, yes on approval of the health insurance, and yes on the roof replacement.
Thank you. Mr. Shi?
On the personnel agenda, no to Jennifer Martin, no to Lisa Dunn, yes to everything else, and yes to the health insurance carrier, and yes to the roof.
Okay, thank you.
So, except Jennifer Martins does not get reappointed, everyone else does.
Okay, so now we're open for board member comments. Yes, Mrs. Maroni?
Caught me off guard. I want to share a letter with the public that I received today from Jennifer Hijack, who is a teacher at Ben Franklin. Hi, Mrs. Maroni, I wanted to take, I wanted to take the time to thank you for bringing the Wingman program to our district. I teach first graders, it was, oh, some of this was cut off. She teaches first graders at Ben Franklin, and today, or yesterday, the students, the wingmen came and taught a lesson on autism. She was so proud of the fifth-grade students who went above and beyond to teach the lesson under the direction of their advisors, Mrs. Angelillo and Mr. Peterson. The students were completely prepared, and the entire lesson gave a warm feeling that was left when the lesson ended and continued out throughout the rest of the day. She says that she got the feeling that the fifth graders were also left with a sense of pride and accomplishment in teaching the lesson. I can't wait for their next visit, she says. I can honestly say I had goosebumps at several times throughout the lesson. Thanks again to bringing this to us. So it was kind of fortuitous that I got this letter from Jennifer today, because Ian and I, this morning, Ian Hockley and I, were escorted to the New Jersey State House by Vince DeLuca of New Jersey School Boards and Jonathan Pushman, the legislative advocate in governmental relations of New Jersey School Boards, for a meeting with Anthony Semino, the executive director of the New Jersey General Assembly Majority Office. The purpose of our meeting with Mr. Semino was to bring the attention of the state legislative body, the Wingman program, as a social-emotional learning program that we have been building this year, and that Edison has very successfully piloted in 10 of our schools. Mr. Semino was extremely impressed, and the next step for us will be that we will be presenting the program before the state senate in the fall. So this was very exciting for us. Truly, we believe that the Wingman program is going to explode in the fall. Also, I want to thank Patrick Cassan, the Edison School Security Chief, for arranging an in-depth article to be written by David B. Sarnoff, Esquire, for the New Jersey Association of School Resource Officers. This article will appear in the New Jersey Center for School Safety. The article is very comprehensive in terms of the creation and the mission of the Wingman program, and the school resource officers reiterate the message that it's not just gun control and putting locks and security glass on the buildings, but it's also changing the climate in the schools. And I have a copy of the article written by Mr. Sarnoff, and we will make this available on the district website as well. It's very comprehensive. So Wingman continues to expand, explode. I am in dire need of retired teachers to come and join us as trainers, because next year we're going to need about 40 teacher trainers, and we really like using the retired teachers. So thank you again, Jerry, and the rest of the board for your incredible support this year. Thank you to all of the teachers and district-wide who've been involved in the program, and I'm so very, very grateful.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes? Mrs. Ward?
Yes. If ever the citizens of Edison Township seek an occasion to be very proud of its veterans, veterans organizations, and police and fire department personnel. It was Tuesday, April 30th. Aside from his three siblings, there was not a person present who knew or remembered Sergeant Frank J. Solomon, yet there turned out en masse for this Korean War veteran whose remains were returned to Edison after 70-plus years. Sergeant Solomon went to Edison schools and served his country, only to be captured and never to return to his hometown. Our only knowledge of his being here is a street in my neighborhood named after him. He was given what my father would call a grand send-off. You have no idea how everyone turned out, and I went to the funeral down south, and I counted the cars behind us, because I was in the car for the, with the commander of the VFW... the, uh, VFW Post Thirty-One Seventeen, who organized this. And, uh, after we got out of the cars, I counted, and there were forty cars behind us, with fire engines, police cars, we had straight run down Route One, straight run down Route One, uh, One Thirty. We had, they stopped traffic all the way down from here to there, and it was wonderful. And God love them, I'm sorry, I'm of the Korean War era, I have four first cousins who served in the Korean War and came home to live productive lives, and we never knew how lucky we are. But the streets in my neighborhood are all named after boys from Edison who went into the Korean War and never returned. And when I first moved here, there was a, an assistant superintendent named, oh my gosh, I can't think of his name right now, but he told me he taught all of those boys in the Bonham Town and Clara Barton schools. So Edison should be very proud of the turnover, turnout that day. So that's it, thank you, Mr. Shee.
Thank you. Mr. Brescher?
I, I just wanted to say, I, I, you know, looking at our retirements here, that it's kind of impressive that, that, well, I noticed, what I first noticed was Robert Perspecky, that he's retiring, and, um, I believe he'll be missed. I mean, I enjoy seeing him at all of our functions. And then I noticed that I had a nurse here that's retiring, Jamie Palco, who took very good care of my son, um, when he was in high school, so I guess that was even a while ago, that might have been ten years ago. And then there's Janine, that's got thirty-two years in the district. Um, I mean, it's just nice to see the people put the time in, in this district and, and spend so much of their careers here. And I appreciate what you do, you know, in your retirement, and I, I, I hope you, you know, I mean, I hope you enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes?
I do want to put in a word, uh, to Mr. Perspecky, because every musical event I go to, and I try to go to as many as possible, he is there, and he is minding the show, let me tell you. So lots of luck and, uh, and happy retirement to Mr. Perspecky.
Okay. Anybody else? Um, I, I just have a quick announcement. Uh, Wednesday, May twenty-second at six-thirty, the JP Stevens Band Program will present its forty-sixth annual Jazz Band Actual, Actual Gavender, featuring perfor, performances from John Adams Middle Schools, a jazz band, and both of the award-winning high school jazz ensembles, followed by end-of-the-evening jam session. It's going to be a blast. Professional musicians, JP Stevens Horror, uh, Hall of Honor members, and former JP graduates surprise the, the audience every year, dust off the instruments, and join for a spectacular, uh, evening of music. You know, it's, it's a free event, so it's, it's Wednesday, May twenty-second at six-thirty. All right? Now we're open for public comments. Anyone? Very quiet there. All right, see none? Um, we're going back to the, uh, closed session. Then?
Whereas public, uh, section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, except the two-thirty-one Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five permits exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances present exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Attention of Edison as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: we're going to discuss the superintendent search. Three, it is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists, and for this resolution shall take effect immediately.
All right, can I have a motion? Okay, Mrs. Conway, Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward's not here. Mr. Shee?